Okay, we need a stop sign over there. I know it gets broken down all the time when people going north and south. We're going south on this street. They go by my house flying. And I know they're not stopping, they don't stop, they take off. Because it cuts straight across there and I stopped. And kids are running bicycles and stuff down that road all the time. Kids on the end of the block there, and one's on this end of block two. You want to come out?
Yes, where you come down the school?
Just on the other side, the next block over. Yeah, to the point of terms, then again, block.
Where Justin used to live.
Right.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Where Justin West used to live.
Yes. Okay, uh, it's been paved, and it was, y'all trimmed it up real good. But there's some people that don't take pride in their place, and it's all grown up again. I guess I'll wait for y'all to do it for them. But it needs to be trimmed down, cleaned up a little bit, you know? It's a little street, but I'm proud of it. And there's some brush that's been over there since February. I've talked with banks about it. They're gonna stack that on our street, not their street, where it's supposed to be up to buy the trash. And it's just brush, and now it's got furniture in it, uh, why not? And, and it just looks terrible. I got pictures of it, y'all, I can see what the place looks like. I mean, you can drive by there and just look down the road. I, in front of my house, uh, weeds grow up out there in that, where it's been paved. And I keep that sprayed in front of my house, keep it down, makes, well, it makes the road a little, little wider too.
Yeah.
But with the stuff that's grown over, there's no barn there, it's grown out there, and it just makes the road narrower.
This house where he used to live years ago.
Yeah, McDaniel's down there.
Second house, the second house that's, that's grown up back there. But y'all trimmed it up all the way to the, to the back of it before. And then following down a block there where the brick house, the big long garage, that's all grown up again, and it's out there in a road. But, you know, it's all gonna do something, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. I mean, I came in today, and we had a man here, I came in here, and there was a man in front of me, and he was asking about, you know, the, the trash we picked up, the brush we picked up at his house. I couldn't believe it, made me feel good, the man was asking, how, how small do you want it cut up? So y'all won't have, you know, y'all loaded up. But there's people that's doing that. They got two or three pickups over there all the time, I don't know why they can't just take it down to the brush shop.
Not able.
Not able?
No.
Why?
He's physically not able.
You hire him. That's what I have to do.
I understand that, but socioeconomic is not all, all the same in every household that we have here.
But the next time we have brush picked up, did we put that address on there?
Yeah, I'm seeing the other stuff, the other part, I'm about to go, they were supposed to picked all that up, and apparently it was one of those that they didn't, because the address is on one side, and they didn't.
They're not putting where the trash is supposed to be.
Seems like it wouldn't be that hard to see, just because the address.
Well, and here's, I had Sandy in the truck with him that day, and Sandy was before, uh, making sure that he picked up everything that was there. In other words, I don't care if it's Sandy, if it's on the list, fine, if it's not on the list, we still pick it up.
Are they just missing it?
They can pick it up. Well, halfway through the day, we have somebody, Chris's wife has a baby, whatever, so he has to leave. Joe had another merger, he has to leave, so she had to get out of the trucks, so then you leave the gentleman by herself, and so it went back to, if it's on the list, and, and the address on the list is where it's sitting, well, yeah, they picked it up. But if it was in the backyard or the front yard, stuff like that, they only go.
This is on the side of the street though, correct?
Yeah, but the crow of the house is on fourth street.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying.
They should be, like I do, if I got it, I'd put it out there by my trash.
I mean, we, we have.
And, because we don't have.
I understand, but you also have other individuals that stack their, uh, brush up against a chain fence.
Right.
They won't touch it. They had two of them.
I'm just saying, we have a code compliance where it's.
Stacking underneath, underneath the day.
That's the repressing.
Right, let's, yeah, there's no repression.
The repressions, I won't pick it up for them.
Well, but don't we have.
That doesn't teach them anything.
I understand it, well, you didn't tell me. This, this is the response you get, is what you get. They hollered on top of the gas.
When you drive through China Grove, and you go seventy-five, and the cop stops you and says it's fifty, you can't even say, oh, you know, it's fifty.
That's true, that's true. And as I get this feedback, I.
Because the same instance is across the street from my house. Except that's cars and lawnmowers and trucks and bicycles and washing machines and whatever you can trade for, whatever you want.
What you're talking about, by that house, where the guy's not physically able to do that? Okay, that, his property ends right there, at the back of that new lawn, so that's y'all's property.
Correct.
It is y'all's fault. Not getting clean. Just wanted to buy that shirt. Man, I would go there. Thank you.
Okay. Number four, citizens to be heard. Did we did that? Number five, oath of office taken by mayor, city council member, districts one and two, for a two-year term. So if they'll come up here, we'll all do it. Okay, discussion and action on employment of mayor pro tempore for one year term.
I make a motion, we keep the same one.
Okay, we have a motion to elect Councilman Soden as your second. Second by Councilman Boskis, all in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you. No, I'm doing that.
That's a good job, that's what you want there.
If there's seven, presentation by Les Pruski on behalf of the Wilson County Crime Stoppers on Law Enforcement Tools Used for Solving or Preventing Crime. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you. My name is, uh, Les Pruski, I was born in Wilson County. Born and raised in a school. So been around these parts for a long time, went to Houston for fifteen years, came back, retired from the IRS, and been doing odd jobs ever since, and, uh, there was article in the paper two years ago about crime stoppers that, uh, concerned citizens should go to a meeting where they were talking about, uh, either dissolving or merging, merging crime stoppers into Corns County. So I asked a bunch of questions, and, uh, the, uh, everybody answered, but they made a motion, because I didn't step up and volunteer, you know? But they made a motion to move it to Corns County, and we walked out, and a guy I know who's on the board, hadn't been on the board for a while, told me, he said, I was asking a lot of questions, why don't you take it over? There's nothing you have to do. And, uh, just go in there and tell, uh, the president that you'll take it over, so. He said, hold a meeting once a year and we'll be fine. Well, I did, I went back, told him I'd take it over, and then I find out that, uh, we're a five oh one C three corporation, we're exempt organization, and we're certified by the Texas Crime Stoppers Council, which is part of the governor's office. And in being certified, we receive funds from the, to the district court and the county court, we receive the probation fees. So, uh, what I'm here for is, I'm seeking help for people to advertise that Crime Stoppers is a tool that helps either prevent or solve crimes for law enforcement. And it's, uh, it's a very good tool. Anybody that, I passed out a little card, and I'm getting ahead of myself here, but, uh, you know, I don't want to talk about what it takes to be a certified organization, but the funds that we receive are restricted, and by that I mean, uh, they have to be used for rewards. You can take out twenty percent and use it for expenses. Uh, the prior board did some fundraising and so forth, because I'm finding out that if you can't get the word out to people that it's really anonymous, then, uh, you know, it's really not, uh, gonna do what it's supposed to do. Now, that card shows you the different ways we can report. When I took over, all we had was a toll-free number, and a lot of people don't want to call. So I went to, I went to some training, found out that there's some, some software that we can purchase. We've got a license to use it. Uh, annual call, annual fee is fifteen hundred dollars a year. And it's being used in several, all over the United States, and also zone countries. I would sure like for y'all to, uh, download that mobile app or go to P three tips, and you will find out that, uh, all those items listed there, there, and you can report on anything you want through a mobile app with P three tips. Uh, we have a call center near Houston that answers our calls, because, uh, we do not, basically, we don't have the capabilities to answer these calls, because these people are trained.
Let, let me stop you some, I understand some. This is for individuals, you're asking individuals to download these apps?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. I didn't know if you just talked about the city, or you're saying that we need to go out there and tell people in the public? Okay, next question. I'm not, hey, you said it was fifteen hundred, but that fifteen hundred gives all of us the ability to use it?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get that. I understood, okay, sorry about that.
No, that's, no, please interrupt me, because it's, you know, I've got so much in my mind as to what we're really trying to do, and, uh, when I took this over, I just wasn't gonna sit back, so I've been to about seventy hours of training across the state, and I'm finding out that there's a lot that a lot of the organizations are doing, because the community is behind them, and they're having community support, and the word's getting out that it's really anonymous, and I'm gonna get into the anonymous part. But if you call the call center, they're not gonna ask for your name, they're not gonna ask for a phone number, they don't have caller ID. Uh, if you go to the website, uh, we've got an agreement with the license provider, it's Anderson Software. Uh, we do not track IP addresses. Uh, it's very important to crime stoppers, and once we send the information out, for example, if we get a tip for stock dealing, now that Jim is a city marshal here, instead of sending it to the sheriff's office, uh, I've added him to the list of, uh, recipients that can receive that information. But it first comes, if it's a call, it comes from the call center to our coordinator. Any questions about how to report and so forth? Okay, how many of you here really believe with modern technology, the way it is, that it's really anonymous?
I do, because I saw it when it was there, so I know what, well, well, no, so I.
But how many of you that don't know much about it, uh, really believe? I'll admit to you, when I went to that meeting, I retired from the IRS after thirty-two years, and there's no way you can pay anybody over six hundred dollars and not have the name of the social security number. So I didn't believe it was anonymous. Well, after going to training and finding out that it's really important, we do not want to know who it is. Sometimes when a person calls in, they will board out their name, or the call center doesn't record it, the name, we never get the name, we have no clue. And one of the responsibilities of our coordinator is to, uh, information sometimes comes, uh, that may kind of give you an idea of where it's coming from. Well, before we will send it out to Jim, uh, the coordinator sanitizes it to take out any information that could possibly identify who's providing the information. Now, one of the things I did find out is that, uh, that doing some research, Crime Stoppers is, uh, it has been one of the most successful crime-solving and fighting program in the history of law enforcement, because it has all of the necessary elements to induce people to give information to crime stoppers, which can be used by law enforcement officers to solve crimes, make arrests, and obtain criminal convictions. The reward is an inducement. We've had some people submit information, and, uh, they never came back and requested the reward. The promise that we make, that it's anonymous, is a contract. Since we offer a reward, and if the person, and I'm saying person, we don't know who they are, if they accept the reward, then the contract is fulfilled. So the promise is really a contract. There's currently a case in Oregon where a tipster submitted information, and through negligence, the identity was disclosed, well, the tipster suing on a richer contract. Well, they lost it in the first court, but it's on appeal, so I don't know where it is right now, but that's, that's kind of an indication as to how serious this anonymous really is. So we will never ask anybody, uh, and I, when I say we, crime stoppers, and that includes law enforcement, the coordinator, and any board member. We'll never ask for any identities. Uh, we do not divulge any tip sheet information, if, uh, defense attorney would come to us and give us a subpoena for the records, we have to say no, even if, if we'd be in contempt of court. In Texas, uh, Texas has gone further than any other states in writing laws. Uh, there's a statute on the book that provides, if you submit a tip, you're, uh, there's a statute that provides that, uh, you're protected from civil liability. There's another statute that talks about us board members and, uh, and law enforcement, anybody, we have designated people in the sheriff's office, in the city of Forestville. Now Jim, he's a designated person to receive this information. So only the designated people get the tip information, and they're bound by the same laws that, uh, any board member is bound by. So the next question is, is how do I get three, four, five hundred dollars to you without knowing who you are? When you call, the call center will give you a number. You will be one, two, three, four, five, and they will advise you to, to make sure you keep that number. If you go on P three tips or the mobile app, there will be a number, there'll be a tip number. You can go back on the app, pull it up, and put in your tip number, and you can find out what's happening to your tip. If it leads to an arrest, then, uh, then you're entitled to a reward, because the information was good enough to help law enforcement, and they gotta go ahead and do the investigation, they gotta make the case. And, uh, you, you will get information in there that, take this number, whatever it is, one, two, three, four, five, you put it on a sheet of paper, you drive through the drive-through window at Tech, at Commerce Bank Texas here, you slip that sheet of paper into the drive-through window, the teller will get it, there'll be an envelope, and it has a number on it. If that number matches the number that you sent on that sheet of paper, that person will put that envelope in there and send it to whoever it is. Then the question is, and I forgot to mention, but Frank Bane has been on the board since October of ninety-two. So right now, he, you know, I haven't been able to talk to him here, alas, but I've talked to his daughter, and and, uh, just waiting to see if he'll be able to come back. Uh, the question came up about, well, you drive through there, there's a camera there. So Frank did some research for me before he got sick, and, uh, he found out that that information is only retained for like two, uh, two weeks, and, uh, and if anybody did want to get it, they'd have to issue a subpoena to the bank. But why would anybody do that? You know? So that's pretty secure. But the same thing on the mobile app, and if you call, that number, you have to call the call center, they'll tell you, within a month, call us back, and we'll tell you what's happening with your tip. Because we have to keep them informed, the call center, so they can tell the tipster. And all they're gonna do is call him, number so and so, and they'll tell him. And the big thing that I'm trying to do, where I really need support, is I'm trying to get the schools, uh, right now, the governor's office, as you've heard all the incidents that are happening to the schools across the country, this is just a little tidbit, that in all the school shootings, in eight, over eighty percent of those incidents, at least one other person knew about it before it happened. And over fifty percent of the school shootings, more than one person knew, uh, before it happened. This was a study done by the Homeland Security and Department of Education. So, you know, if I can convince people, and if I can convince y'all that it's really anonymous, the way it goes, then, you know, word can get out, but everybody I talked to, when I asked a question, whether they really believe it's anonymous, just like I, I said, no. But there's laws that prevent disclosure, and it's really important. The big thing is, is, and I have contacted all the schools and all the districts in Wilson County, and I'm working with them, trying to get them to educate the kids, but it's more important to educate parents to tell their kids, you know, if you're concerned about something, and you don't have anybody you can trust, you know, they'll go on the phone and download the app and submit information, and we have amended our bylaws to include, uh, let's say a student does submit information and it results in disciplinary action, then we have added, uh, changed the bylaws so we can pay a reward, uh, to the students for information, so, you know, then they'll have to find, if they're under eight, they'll have to find a parent to drive them to the bank. But as long as you don't tell anybody you submitted any information, then it's anonymous. And now, the, the advertising on the sign says five thousand dollars, that's for very serious crimes. Uh, the Texas Crime Stoppers Council has put a, like a point system. Depends on how serious the crime, points are assigned to it, and if it has two point five points, it's worth five hundred dollars, you know, seven hundred, I think since I've been here, the most we've paid out to one, uh, number is nine hundred dollars, so. Y'all have any questions?
Okay, see, I, I was, I have to tell you, I think maybe I learned something tonight. Because in my mind, I thought Crime Stoppers were only, you only called in for the case that was, you know, if you know anything about this case called Crime Stoppers. And you're saying if we know anything, we need to call in, even, because I always thought it was just for that case, you know, whatever case that was that popped up, so I did learn some.
That's a good point, because that's there to, you know, like in these school incidents, if whoever knew would have called, that doesn't mean it would have been prevented, but if, if, say, uh, the school finds out, I mean, if we get a threat, then it immediately goes to law enforcement and the school, they're immediately notified, and if it's, I, I've been extremely lucky, when I took over, we had an individual, was a coordinator, that we were paying, and as soon as I went to the first training session, I realized, this is not gonna work, because that person's gotta disseminate information that number one's gotta be protected, and number two, you know, they gotta have some kind of an idea whether it needs to go forward or not. Well, I met with Tom Caldwell, our county attorney, and I was telling him that I'm really having, you know, trying to find some law enforcement officer that would, you know, volunteer to, to be the coordinator, well, nobody wanted to do it, and I kept getting noses, and I met with Tom Caldwell, just telling him what I was doing, he said, well, I got an investigator, he's a certified police officer, he'll do it. Then I go, God, you got, that's, you know, he's just gonna do it, he's gonna be told, and I thought, oh, this is not gonna go good. His name is Josh Luthers, by the way, but he is really, uh, he's doing a bang-up job, I mean, uh, uh, he is very interested in Crime Stoppers, uh, he's doing a good job of working with, with the city law enforcement, with the sheriff's office, uh, and, uh, a lot more is happening now since he became the coordinator, and he is, you know, he's trained. If something really happens and it's an immediate threat, then, uh, he'll immediately contact law enforcement, so. Anyway, after that, how many of you really believe it's anonymous?
Well, this is already in Forestville School, I know, because my son has the app. So I know it's anonymous.
Forestville has a police department?
Mm-hmm.
And the, and, and I met with the superintendent's and the police chief. With the police chief is, got his officers going out and spreading the words, so.
It's the school police, and he's the one that handed me this months ago.
Correct, so.
So, so, well, we're, you know, over there, I don't, I haven't seen it here, but.
Right, and I've, there, there's a, it's a real sensitive subject. When I went to all the training on, uh, on, uh, Crime Stoppers in schools, I was told that I'm gonna get resistance. And, uh, you know, I mean, I, I'm getting a lot of my stuff from the governor's office, because we answer to the governor's office. Since we're a certified organization, then when we receive those funds, we have to file an annual report with the governor. I mean, for twenty seventeen, we were even audited by the governor's office. So, uh, it's, uh, I've learned a lot, I'm gonna, you know, you look at me, I'm, I'm not a young pup anymore, and now Frank Bane is not a young pup, and my treasurer, he's older than I am, I'm seventy-four. And I've talked to a lot of young people that have students. I am, I'm seventy-four. And I've talked to a lot of young people that have students, children in schools, and everybody's too busy. Nobody, I, I'm trying to find somebody, and, and if y'all know of anybody that would be interested, I'm trying to find somebody that would have the passion for this like I do. I really believe that it can help. You know? I, I just don't want, you know, we've had enough tragedy in, in Wilson County. And uh, that happened right after I came from a three-day conference in, in, so and so. And that was a lot of things they were talking about. So, I've seen stuff that, that shocked me to no end. And uh, that's why I'm trying to push this, and I'm willing to go and meet with any group anywhere and basically tell them the same thing. The question is, is how many of you really believe it's anonymous? I hadn't convinced you that much. Well, what do you think, again, how could it be, how, how do you think they would find out that you submitted the information?
You, you just made comment that when you dropped the bank and you submit that paperwork through that depository drawer, that teller knows.
That teller would know any of us.
Right.
And she would know what that number meant.
But that teller doesn't know if you're the one that submitted the information?
Well, she's, she's an educated guess.
That makes any difference, you're the one that's sending the cash.
Yeah.
You think a third?
I think there should be a better way to pay. I, I, when Mari was on there, we had this conversation quite a bit, Mari and Clarence, I mean, that's...
Yes. And, and, and that has come up at a bunch of the training sessions I have. And that is only the, the most secure way of doing it. Now, you know, if that's a concern, then maybe we need to look into having another bank somewhere else besides for people from Stockdale.
It doesn't make any difference, the bank is a bank.
Have one of the Crime Stopper people take the envelope, then he would still know, never mind. I mean, we've had this conversation...
See, and that's the whole problem. If I come to you and give you that envelope, then I know, and if I, let's say that the defense attorney sues, then I know who it is. But if they sue now and ask for information, we tell them we don't have a clue.
I know, like, so we, Mari and Clarence, we've talked about that so much, you know, the different way to be, for the pay process.
Uh, Dallas tried putting it in a library in a book. You know, that didn't work. Uh, you know, in the big cities, you know, there's so many banks and so forth. But here, we use, uh, this bank was Frank, you know, made arrangements.
Yeah, but see, you're not seeing the point.
I see the point.
The point is, it doesn't make any difference whether or not it's this bank or Heritage Bank or, or any of it. It's the personal contact that you make face-to-face with somebody, they know that you submitted that number. Even though, even though regardless, you submitted a number and you're the person that's receiving the cash payment, uh, a man that's derelict and a thug, he don't care whether or not you got it or not, because he's gonna go through you to find out where he went to, if they're that intense.
You talking about the person that got arrested?
Correct.
Committed at, at...
Or his friends, or, or whatever. Because, uh, they're not beyond anything. Even local penny ante thugs are not beyond...
But, but, but it, but it is, they have no idea what that's tied to. They know it's a money transfer from Crime Stoppers. They have no idea what case it's trans, it's fired to.
They don't know what it's...
And since nobody else in there technically should know, because unless the person that called told somebody else, that man's not gonna know who reported it. So, he ain't gonna be able to go to every bank and find out who got money, and ever find out that that was the person that reported him. There, there's no way for them to ever dis, discover that if the person doesn't know where to go to begin with, which means somebody else had to tell. Because if there's... I can go get money from that bank, like, like he said, with that number. And if nobody knows, they ain't even gonna know I went to the bank to get the number, and they ain't gonna be able to call that bank and say, hey, did somebody come collect money for Crime Stoppers? They ain't gonna have any idea there was money collected. They have no idea Crime Stoppers was involved. You know, that, to me, that's, that, that would work, because un, unless there's a leak somewhere other than the bank, they're never gonna know what bank to go to. And you can, and you can probably, I don't know, I may be stepping out, but if I, if I did this, can I tell you what bank I wanna pick it up at?
Oh, you picked the bank, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Can, in other words, I'm, I'm putting my number in here, and I'm gonna go to this bank.
I see what you're saying.
In other words, I'm not gonna go to my local bank, I'm gonna go over to a bank I ain't never been through and drive up there and give them a number. Can I not do that?
Right now, we only have, I mean, it was...
That's the only bank.
It was complicated to set up the procedure for, you know, you're leaving, you're leaving cash in an envelope, so the bank has to have, they have to account for that number, and then log that number in, and then tell us when the number, you know, because we'll go over there and check. We have to pick up the cash after, uh, six months, if nobody picks it up. So, but, you know...
In the day, in the day still, with lock boxes, how can you not just send them to a lock box? Yeah, just send them to a secure post office box. Send them, say, this is, it's in here. You got my number, your number is in that box, you go get it, I don't see.
In other words, put it in...
And the mail would have no idea. You, you have a Crime Stoppers box, and you just send it to a box. This is a box. They have no idea who picks up at that box.
Yeah, but everybody would have access to that box. If they know, if they know, let's say that we've got four or five tips...
Not, not if you had a key code locked, you just change the lock for a new person. Only that person with that number can get in that door.
That's a good idea.
If you had a key coded like a security, like a safe at your house, that you can reprogram every time you use it, you reprogram it, only two people know, whoever programmed it and whoever's gonna pick it up, there's only two people know what number's in that box.
See, that's the way they rent help dealers now.
And, but, but it would work, because there's no face-to-face contact with anybody. Now, post office probably got cameras in them, but they ain't gonna, you'd have to know, somebody's gonna go pick up that particular box, and I'm watching the camera.
That's a pretty good idea. I gotta look into that.
And that way, you just use post offices. It's a government box. It's supposed to be as secure as, po, mail's supposed to be as secure as anything. And they got lock boxes, so they probably be able to fix that kind of deal up.
I don't have a, uh, P.O. box, uh, but do you, don't you have to have a key?
For a P.O. box, you do. And, but see, like here, if you get a package and it doesn't fit in your box, they leave a key in your box to go pick that up. Well, there's no cert, no difference that somebody just says, okay, that box is being picked up.
But do they have a box where they got the key code where you can put in a number?
I don't know. I don't know, but it can be done.
I don't know if you could do it in a post office.
I bet you could. I bet the government would get it done, if somebody was approaching with it. Because all they gotta do is go to one of them key deals, change it out with a, a punch code one of all their safe boxes, and change one box out, and that's all we using for it.
I wonder if, uh, you don't have a UPS store here, Stockdale?
Forestville's closest one in the...
I wonder, I wonder if they have, uh, do they have a key code on their boxes?
I don't think they have boxes.
I'll have to find out, but that's a pretty good idea.
I think they do.
And, and, and Forestville? I've never seen the boxes in Forestville.
I think I've been there, people go and get them now.
At, at the UPS store?
You can have a P.O. box.
I go in there all the time, I've never seen one.
It's behind each other.
Tell me, that's on a, kind of a different avenue. Do you have information to compare what percentage of tips from Wilson County lead to action versus the percentage of tips in Karnes County that lead to action versus, you know, like comparatively? Because I'm, I'm, I know that ano, the anonymous aspect is a concern too, but I also know that some people kinda have a flip an attitude towards it because they think nothing will happen.
I've talked to some young people and said, I'm not turning my friend in. One person flat told me that, uh, I'm not gonna be a snitch, even if nobody knows I did it.
Right, but if you make a tip, how likely is it that something will be done?
Snitch is very sticky. It will be reviewed by the coordinator, and if it's got sufficient information there that could lead to something, then it'll be referred to, if it's in Stockdale, it'll be referred to Jim to investigate. Then he'll have to report back and say the information was either good or it wasn't good, it did not lead to an arrest. And if it does...
But since you've tracked that, to her question, since you tracked that, what, it, that what resulted from it, do you keep records of how many of your tips actually lead to something? That's what you're asking.
We do have, uh, I don't have that with me, but we can go back, I can go back and look. See, one thing about this program is, everything is on that, in this software that we purchased. So, we know how many tips there was actually a reward on. I can tell you, it's not very many. We're lucky to get, we're lucky to get, and, and that's the whole problem, is, uh, when I took over, we were lucky to get one or two a month. Uh, now we're getting about twenty to thirty, uh, every two months. And, uh, we get, probably, this year, we may have had four for the schools. So, uh, but we paid rewards out on some of the, the school ones, so...
Do you still get the money from the jurors, when they pay the jurors, if they wanna give it to Crime Stoppers? Is that still an option for jurors to do?
Well, that's correct, yeah. Now, that money can be used for expenses, advertising...
I didn't know if they still have the option to, don't give it to the Crime Stoppers.
Yes, they do. We do get a little bit, yeah. The primary funds come from, from the two courts, the probation fee, it's not a lot. I think it's seven to eight thousand dollars. And then it's restricted except for twenty percent. In other words, it has to go into that account. And you, there's a complicated formula that you can use, you have to have so much in that account all the time, and that's what goes to the governor's office. They look at that every year. So... But if I can't convince y'all it's anonymous, then, uh, I got a problem. But that's a good point. I like the idea of, and, and I, I thought about that, at Stockdale, you know, the tellers probably know everybody, everybody there. So, that's a good point. But for that, from that standpoint, is that the only thing that doesn't, in your mind, doesn't make it anonymous?
Yes.
That's amazing.
It's a good point. Any other questions? I haven't accomplished what I said. And, and don't, you know...
Working progress.
Your what?
A working progress.
That's right. And, and they told me that this is a, you know, you're climbing a very large hill. And I know, I'll give it two more years, and then if somebody doesn't wanna take it over, I'm out. Because it, it, it's a lot of work. Uh, we have to, the coordinator and I have to go to training, uh, to be certified. We have to have, uh, at least sixteen hours of training every other year, and that's within our certification. It's gotta be within one year of recertification. We've gotta be recertified every two years, so... Otherwise, it just don't. I, I have no other questions. I wanna thank you all for giving me the time to say what I said, and thank you for the input. I really appreciate that.
I know, on behalf of us, we thank you for all the work you put in. I mean, thank you for...
Well, I, I really find it very challenging, and, uh, I've learned way more than I need to know, and I've learned more about Wilson County than I need to know. And we'll leave it at that.
You do. We'll go to number eight now, discussion and action to approve Bennett's for the previous meeting held on April the second, two thousand and nineteen. We have motion by Councilman Landbein.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bennett, all in favor, motion passes and action. Number nine, discussion and action on two thousand and twelve International Fire Code Section five oh six dash one pertaining to key boxes. Okay, city, city manager will let you take that one.
In response to the questions that the council had pertaining to key lock, our, uh, legal counsel administered, and her interpretation of the law, the question is, is, uh, do, when we appointed the fire marshal, does he have a set topic in, uh, description of practices? And then the response to that was no. She goes, well, then, basically, it's, in the way the terminology reads, is yes he, yes he can, and yes he cannot. So, really and truly, it's to the discretion of the council, will not, we won't press the issue on, on the knockbox issue. Is that not what your interpretation of the conversation, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I think it's up to us to make that decision, if we want them or we don't want them.
I thought we were pretty clear how we felt a few, couple years ago, and then you told us last time that we voted to give him...
The answer to your question is yes. In the response, in, out of the, when they asked for that permission or whatever, y'all's response from the council to the fire marshal at that period of time, which was David Rice, was, we're not gonna require the, uh, existing businesses to have to, we're gonna ask them if they would. All new businesses, as the code stated in our interpretation of time, is that we're gonna require them to.
What, what I specified back then, and I still stand by that, and I thought we kind of were going back and forth, it ought to be up to the, it should be the choice of the person, the choice of the business. If, if they don't want it, then they shouldn't be made to get it. I mean, I still feel that way. It should not be something that they're made to do, because if, if they're willing, I mean, there's too many, too many things that could go wrong. There could, there, you know, I just, that should be their choice. And they know that if, if there's a fire and their building is, the, the door is knocked down, that's their choice. They didn't have a lockbox. My other concern was, okay, say we make them get a lockbox, there is a fire, they go to that lockbox and the key's not there. Is the city liable because they can't put, they can't, there's no key there?
Well, and the answer to that question is, on the yearly, uh, you can't make them put the key in there, but in the yearly inspections, part of the process is see whether that key is in there.
Exactly. But see, once you have not watched too much TV, I mean, just recently, there was a deal on TV about the fire, like there, and that they do, key didn't stolen by the fire department.
Correct. And, and there again, as we sit here and have these, this open discussion, when was the last time the, you heard somebody's business broken into for the simple reason that the fire department stole the key of a knockbox and broke into somebody's business?
I just don't think we oughta, we shouldn't make them get a lockbox.
And, and that's the pleasure of the council. But out of the, I know out of that conversation that five years ago, six year, let's see, yeah, six years ago, two thousand thirteen, that, out of that conversation is, we're gonna give existing businesses the option, and the new ones we're gonna require. That's where, uh, the interpretation came down low. It, it, it had gotten to, of course, we changed fire marshals, uh, to the other gentleman, in, in his interpretation, that all of them have. And of course, I dealt with the issue with the fire marshal during that period of time, to where, to reflect to him the wills and wishes of the council that is sitting, that this is what they want to have after. Yeah, but the law states this, and if they gonna approve the law, they need attend to X, Y, and Z. That's why he's not hearing it on.
Okay, so, we ask you to find out, the law stated, is that the discretion of, how is that worded? I forgot. We, that was one thing we wanted you to ask the lawyer.
May require.
May, yes.
And out of her response was, because we don't have a, um, dedicated, uh, procedure of how he's to handle his office, and if it's not line item, you will do X, Y, and Z, then we're sitting in a position to where you can choose at this point in time, do we or do not.
So, we have, we have the, the ability to, to say they do, it's not required, because by law, it's not required. That's what I'm gathering, hearing you say?
No.
Okay.
The way our next state... The way our ordinance states, correct me, Ms. Mayor, the way the law states is yes, we do. But because we don't have a description of line item duties that the fire marshal is to proclaim, we have the option to require whether or not we do or we do not.
I guess I didn't word it correctly. That's what I was just, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So we do have that choice to say it's not required.
Correct.
All right.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor.
That is the way I understand it. It's up, the way I had understood is that in two thousand and thirteen, the city said, this is what we want.
Because we were told it was a law.
Okay.
He just said it's not.
Okay, you actually, in the stipulation, yes, it is in the two thousand and twelve. It states predominantly that they will, okay?
They will or they may?
They may.
Well.
The fire marshal may.
May. Correct, exactly. It's in the may. And because we do not have a description of duties, uh, that the fire marshal presides by, then we have the option to state at this point in time that he doesn't have to.
Well, see, the reason we voted the way we did is because we weren't told all that. We were told it had to be that way based on the fire code of that year.
Well, and the reason you weren't told that at that point in time was experience.
Okay.
Okay, remember, we, in two thousand and thirteen, six years ago, I can tell you from handling fire code or planning and zoning or whatever, over the experiences and arguments that we've had over the last five or six years, you get educated real quick.
I understand that, but we caught holy whatever in town because the council voted that. Yes, the council voted that way based on the information you gave us.
And one of the, not other, the information I gave you, it was came from the fire marshal's office.
From the him.
Correct. And what the problems came down is whenever we lost one fire marshal, that really started into the other one because the other gentleman that was sitting in the office had a real hard time taking orders. This is, I am, this, this is my title, this is my office, and this is how you need to run.
We set.
I'm going, you gotta understand that we're not force feeding our citizens into. We don't wanna show gross negligence. We wanna show that we do, do any inspections. And if you went to, as the conversation I had with them, if you follow that book from point A to point B, there's not a business in town that can keep their doors open.
Well, I just wanted to get it clear that the reason we voted the way we did was because of what we were told. And now we're finding out that that's not exactly how it was.
And see, and out, out of one of the conversations that we had, and I go, it's the opinion of myself and the council that we would like you to handle your office in this manner. He goes, I'm not running that office in this manner. And I go, well, then we gonna beat your chances.
Yeah, he's gone. So it's up to us now how we wanna handle that lock box.
That is exactly right.
I agree with Becky. I just wanna make sure from a legal perspective liability that we're covered on both sides.
That we, and we ask for that, we've asked for that to be asked.
And then our response and interpretation of what she says is, yes, you can do what you.
But are we legally liable?
Or is there some provision on our insurance policy that we need to specifically say or add or whatever?
Because we, that's one thing we wanted to know about our liability as a city.
And her response was because we do not have a, uh, a description of how he is to perform his duties and assets, that no, we do not.
We do not have a liability?
That's right. And see, and one of the, because we even asked, okay, do we need to get an affidavit from the business owner stating in, uh, relieving us of responsibility that it's on their shoulders that, no, I don't wanna have the lock box? And if we have to physically enter their building, that they would have repercussion against the, the city for damages? And her response was no.
Because that was my concern.
And is that not how you remember the conversation?
But we'll have documentation though, when it comes to doing your inspection, whether or not they chose. They were given the option.
Right.
Correct. There is, out of their duties, lock box refused.
On the fire inspection form, there's an area on the bottom where Edwin can put there that they refuse to get.
And so it shows where they chose or refused it.
Or choose not to have.
You can make them sign everyone, you know what I'm saying? It's just for our fires, so. And they get a copy of that too. Once the, you know, they pay for their inspection.
And like you said, I think there's a hundred and fourteen?
You mean this is it?
Yes, hundred and fourteen. Oh, I, I remember. Yeah, hundred and fourteen.
The one that's in here. I think if y'all take the motion to do it, the one you're saying, that will.
I would like to, Edwin, I would like to make that motion, um, that we not require lock boxes of the businesses in Stockdale, that it's their choice.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Adams that, that when a business comes in, that we'll tell them they have two options. One is they can put a lock box or they can sign the form stating if they don't wanna.
It needs to be signed on, they need to sign it, we choose or we don't choose. We need to have a signature in the city whichever way, you know, and we will have it.
Well, I mean, there's not a form for that.
It can be added, you said.
But on the bottom, there's a line item. I'm sure Edwin's gonna put his notes that they need, so, you know, they just don't have it, whether it's existing businesses or new businesses.
Now, we need interpretation. You, you may new, you may.
Yeah, I, I'm saying businesses, the businesses of Stockdale have the choice to have a lock box or not.
What I'm getting at is we never required the old ones to have.
Correct.
Right.
So.
So the businesses of Stockdale, that would be new.
At the time that they did the inspections, it was brought up to them.
Businesses and, and future businesses of Stockdale have the choice to have a lock box or not.
This is the, that's future, is what you're saying, right?
Got it. And we have a second by Councilwoman Landbein, all in favor, motion passes in action. Number ten, fire chief report.
Probably out of town. It's in the management.
Good.
Number eleven, city manager's comments.
As you see your financial statement, if you have them or whatever, of course, the general account, Phoenix said a negative two hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-four cents. Water account was at a negative one thirty-three, six twenty-three, eighty-nine. Waste water is at a positive thirty-nine hundred and sixty dollars, thirty cents. Natural gas is at a minus seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-two cents for a profit and loss for the seven months prior of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and five cents. To bring you up to speed, uh, of course, where those expenses and why they were negative figures, of course, we moved three hundred thousand dollars out of the general account to the savings account, which is, savings accounts, which are at the Heritage Bank in Nixon, Texas. We also spent to re-amp the water well on a non-emergency basis, but on the basis, that expense was a hundred and forty-six thousand, three sixty-four, twenty-seven. Then we had to have with CEPC program capital improvements at the wastewater plant around forty-six thousand. Those expenditures were four hundred and ninety-two thousand, three sixty-four, twenty-seven. So if you take those numbers and fold them into what I've seen, I've stowed really and truly, uh, we would be at around a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars positive for the year of our tactical we have been for the last eight or nine years in a profit and loss. As you'll see, uh, you will, uh, notice that we have made twenty-two hundred and seventeen dollars in interest at Heritage Bank on deposits of the one million, ten, ten thousand dollars we had there. And a total on deposits of three million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents. As I also wanted to bring to your attention, uh, there again, I need to ask questions about, I am, i- 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 I am gonna reapply for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant, which we did not get funded in this last deal for the six hundred thousand dollars, not to, which, of course, we would match three hundred thousand versus the three hundred thousand from the Texas Parks and Wildlife to continue to try to secure a splash pad and, for the, and some of the things that we wanted to do in, uh, Central Park at Glassfield. So that procedure will start again and hopefully I'll have that submitted by October first. And once again, we won't find out whether or not we get selected until March of two thousand and twenty. Next thing is, is as we move forward with the budgetary process between now and October first, are there any, any?